Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Several items here tonight. The first is I want to add an item to the agenda. It would be 5.6, and it would be a discussion about the salary for the city manager. Also, I would like to say we had scheduled here tonight Terry Ward, the project manager for the bridge. He's not able to make it, so that will be at an upcoming council meeting for an update. And I have a statement I'd like to read. The council did have a closed session a week ago tonight and did a performance review on our city manager, and I'd like to read the minutes from that. "On February 27, 2017, the City Council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Steve Sarvey, city manager. In accordance with the governing law, at this city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the February 27 closed session, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Sarvey reached by the city council at the February 27 closed meeting. Conclusions: Mr. Sarvey did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Sarvey's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As mayor of the city of Winona, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the February 27 closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Steve Sarvey. Mr. Sarvey has met expectations as city manager. Mr. Sarvey continues to work to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Mr. Sarvey works well with other city employees, the public, and businesses. And the city council appreciates Mr. Sarvey's service to the city and looks forward to continuing its employment relationship with Mr. Sarvey for the betterment of the Winona Also, I have some exciting news, and it's really a privilege tonight to be able to read this announcement. About, almost exactly a year ago, the candy company on the west end of Winona closed, and along with it about ninety jobs disappeared. And it's my privilege to announce that Amy Paris, the founder of Midwest Co-Pac LLC and the Pet Health People LLC, purchased the previously closed candy plant located at 1,000 West Fifth Street. Midwest Co-Pac will serve as the primary supplier for Amy's flagship company, the Pet Health People LLC, as well as contract manufacturing for Midwest-based food brands. With the Winona workforce that boasts centuries of collective experience in food manufacturing, they hope to restore many of the jobs of former factory employees, making a positive impact in Winona. The Pet Health People provide holistic remedies for dogs and cats. Lix's primary product line includes gummy and liquid pet vitamins and health supplements that provide cats and dogs with a higher quality of life at all stages of development. Lix's products utilize 100 percent human-grade and all-natural ingredients. Amy's vision for Midwest Co-Pac was made possible with the help of the team at the Winona Port Authority, Winona National Bank, 504 Corporation, SBA 504 Loan Program in Rochester, Minnesota, who helped finance the purchase of the facility, and the Winona Workforce Center, who helped with the training of employees. I am excited that successful entrepreneurs like Amy Paris find Winona a welcoming place to do business. We are pleased that the dedicated and experienced workforce can have redevelopment opportunities in Winona. They're initially hiring about twelve people, and over the next few months intend to hire another twenty-five people, and all expectations are that this will be a growing company. And I want to congratulate Lucy McMartin and Myron White and the city employees that I know have worked very hard on this project for a year. And to have this kind of success for this kind of a manufacturing facility in a year's time, I think, is remarkable. And again, thank you and congratulations on your work, and it's a really good thing for all of Winona. And I also wanted to announce, too, that we are going to be, after the public hearing, item 5.1 will be moved up for discussion, allowing our guests to hit the road before the big storm comes. And that's all I have. And ask the city manager if he has anything.
Just one thing, Your Honor. Just wanted to let the council know that the Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training, better known as the Post Board, has conducted a compliance review of the Police Department, looking at mandated employee training and department policies. And please inform that the Police Department passed the review with flying colors. So kudos to the police chief, the sergeants, and the rest of the officers.
Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurling.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Porzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the property tax abatements.
I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask Michaela from Springstead to come up to the podium and address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michaela Hewitt, representing Springstead, the city's financial advisor on the tax abatement project. I would like to give a brief overview. I'd like to give a brief presentation regarding the tax abatement and what's being asked of you, and will be available to answer any questions. I know at a previous work session, there was discussion on what tax abatement is, how it works, but I'd like to give a brief overview. Tax abatement was established as an economic development tool that cities, counties, and school districts use to finance certain projects. It's defined by a certain statute listed there. The tax abatement itself provides authority to cities to collect through a special levy or the issuance of bonds to support economic development projects and public improvements by identifying those benefiting areas within the tax abatement area. Tax abatement allows cities to levy the taxes for the specific development purposes. Tax abatement itself is not an actual abatement or a non-payment of taxes. All properties that are both within the tax abatement and outside the tax abatement area all pay taxes the same. The tax abatement itself is adopted by a resolution after a notice meeting, and so where we are tonight is that public hearing is open. Following that public hearing, the city can adopt the resolution which establishes the tax abatement area. The tax abatement tool itself does not require a property owner consent, because, again, there's no impact to those properties that are within a tax abatement as opposed to other properties within the city. The abatement resolution, the one before you tonight, indicates what the terms of the abatement are, which includes the amount, the number of years, the public benefits for the abatement, and any other terms applicable to the use of the tool. Here's a listing of the identified project costs that would be financed with the tax abatement bonds. They're listed here for your reference, and I know they were discussed previously. There are certain costs that can be financed with tax abatement. Those costs are listed here. They can be for improvements to private property, to finance or provide for public infrastructure improvements, to acquire or construct public facilities. And if bonds are issued, they're a little bit more restrictive in that they can be used for public improvements that benefit the properties, for acquisition or conveyance of land, or to reimburse a property owner for the cost of the improvements, as well as the related costs of issuance for the bonds. Couple of things to think about when we were identifying the areas within the tax abatement. There are no back-to-back abatements, which means that once these properties are within abatement, eight years must pass before a new abatement can begin on those same parcels or properties. That doesn't prohibit the city from using other properties in a tax abatement, just the specific ones that are included. They cannot be applied within TIP districts, Tax Increment Financing districts, but they can be used after those districts have been decertified. The maximum duration of a tax abatement is fifteen years if all three entities participate, meaning the city, county, and school district, and twenty years if two or fewer. In this case, we're looking at an approximate eleven-year tax abatement, so well below the statutory maximum. A few additional items that we have to consider when structuring the tax abatement project and revenue stream. If tax abatement bonds are issued, like are being proposed now, the principal amount of those bonds cannot exceed the estimated sum of the total abatements. So the total abatements for this project are about 4.8 million, and that is the same size of the principal amount, power amount of the bonds. The maximum aggregate amount on an annual basis for using tax abatement is the greater of ten percent of your net tax capacity or 200,000. So this becomes important if you're using multiple abatements when trying to understand what your maximum annual capacity is. From a calculation standpoint, tax abatement is the current tax rate multiplied by the current net tax capacity of each parcel within the abatement area. Few specifics about the abatement bonds. The estimated total project cost from the listing on the previous slide is about just under five million, 4.987 million. The estimated bonding amount is 4,805,000. The abatement would be established now in 2017. The abatement bonds are a term of twelve years, but the actual abatement would begin in 2018, levying fall of '17, prepayable eighteen. So the abatement term itself would be eleven years for a twelve-year bond. Again, on the abatement revenue assumptions, the principal amount of the bonds cannot exceed the estimated sum of the abatement, so we've sized the abatement revenues cumulatively to be the same as the power amount, principal amount of the bonds. And the identified properties that are included in the abatement are properties that have been identified as those that benefit from the project. They're not currently within a tax increment district or another tax abatement. And again, the impact financially to those properties is no different than any other properties within the city. They will pay taxes just like every other one, and the tax abatement levy is spread over the entire city. The estimated taxable market values from those properties were identified are just under 51 million of property value. And again, they are commercial areas on the east and west edge of the city that have The abatement specifics itself, the total power amount of the bonds are 4,805. The total estimated abatement to cover the principal amount, power amount of the bonds is 4,843,690. The average annual debt service over the eleven years is 516,000. The average abatement debt levy is 440,000, with the average debt levy for the interest component as a general levy of about 67,000. Where we are tonight is the public hearing for both the tax abatement and the 501(c)(3) bonds. Following that is the authorization on the sale of the tax abatement bonds. March 20 is when the bonds would be sold and the award of the bonds, and then an anticipated closing date of April 20. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions or step aside for the public hearing.
Any questions for Michaela? If there's none, thank you.
Mayor, I just have one here.
George.
Now, this is just for the city portion of the property tax, right?
That is correct. That's a good question. Just the city share of the taxes on those identified properties.
Okay, thank you. Chad, would you like to come up?
Mayor and council, before we begin the public hearing, I did want to go over the projects one more time with you. I know you've seen them several times, but certainly before the public hearing, we'd like to describe the detail specifically of the Masonic Temple. So again, the project list includes $2,423,000 for the Levy Park Gateway Main Street improvements. We have $250,000 for the Solbyski Park Pavilion. We have $230,000 for the Prairie Island Campground improvements. That includes electrical and water upgrades at the campground. We have Bamanic Fields, primarily used for our softball fields down by the lake, some improvements to those fields, tennis courts in our neighborhood parks, specifically at Knott Valley and Valley Oaks, moving irrigation to city water and adding irrigation to the Vets Memorial and the soccer field adjacent to the Band Show. And then $65,000 that would go toward roof replacement and some HVAC improvements at the Levy Park Facility, I guess more commonly known as the Boathouse Restaurant. And then, of course, we have the $1.8 million for improvements at the Masonic Temple. In your item, to set the sale of the bonds, the item 5.1, we provided that supplemental information that details out the cost for the improvements in the Masonic Temple to equal that 1.8 million. So we have 678,000 going to rigging improvements. Again, this is the option C that was outlined in the rigging study that we presented the two previous council meetings. We are allocating $200,000 for code updates to the building. We are allocating $300,000 for stage equipment and/or using that $300,000 as a possible contingency for unforeseen items within the building that pertain to the upgrades that we're proposing. $460,000 for electrical upgrades to the facility. And then, of course, we need to include the design cost for those items at 161,000. Again, that gets the total of 1.8 million dollars. So that's the detail of the projects that are included in this recreation bond.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Public hearing, or is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue? I'll ask again, is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this issue? Final chance, anybody here that wishes to speak? Are the public hearings closed? Opened up for council discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion? Call or vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, oops, nope, we're going to new business. Item 5.1 is to set the sale for the city tax abatement revenue bonds. Item 5.1.
Move to approve, to set the date for March 20.
Motion by George, sir, a second. Seconded by Michelle. Discussion? George?
Just one question, probably for Chad here. When we first seen the list of improvements, now it's changed from the first time we seen the list, where I touched base with Stephen a little bit today, the heated and air conditioning was going to be first, and now there's been some changes in that. Can you explain why those changes took place in there?
Mayor and council, when we first proposed improvements in the Masonic Temple this past June as part of the budgeting process, at that time, we knew what we knew. At that point, we had a proposal from Hurry Back Productions that would have included some financial matching to improvements that were going to be done within the building. There was also some indication that Hurry Back would have provided some private funding, not matched, to do some improvements to code updates, to rigging system, to stage, to theater enhancements. Since we lost that partner and that funding source, we ended up taking a different route from this past summer. We intentionally kept our flexibility with the public announcements and the hearings and, of course, the bond sale, to keep those options open. And so, you know, from this summer, from mid-August till now, certainly we had a major change in course of action, and so we determined that in order to get the building ready for programming and for use, that this is the best option to move forward and getting the building programmed again and getting some activity in the building, and that's why we're recommending these options to start with. Certainly, the building needs the other improvements. That's why we provide that list to you. We are going to pursue other funding streams for those enhancements, so we'll specifically write a grant for the masonry work and then bring back, certainly recommendations, to fund the other components of the building, upgrades that are needed.
I would add, too, George and Chad, I don't think you mentioned, but there was a meeting about a week or so ago with a lot of the people that use the Masonic or have used it or have an interest in the Masonic, and it was the unanimous conclusion of that meeting that these would be the priorities for them. So I think their recommendations are important as well. Other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Now to petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, appointments to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Bruno Borsari, Lynette Power, and Hans Madlin. I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2 is an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the American Inn at 303 Pelzer Street. The effective date would be April 1 through June 30, and I would recommend approval contingent on receipt of the certificate of insurance.
So moved.
And I believe there's someone here from the American Inn if you have questions.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. George?
Did he just tell us what's going on?
Would you like to come up to the podium, state your name and address?
My name is Chris Rogie. I work for Three Rivers Hospitality. That's the management company and owner of the property, the American. I guess the one question I get asked a lot is when do you plan opening? And right now, we're looking and have been at April 13. So if anyone has any questions, it's more than half of them.
It's coming along.
It is. It's on schedule. We're spending this week, we're looking at hiring between 15 and 20 people, probably five to eight full-time and the rest part-time.
And sixty rooms, is that correct?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Are you going to have a pub in there or just, or a full bar or?
It's, well, it's refrigerated. Sorry. It's called a pub, and it's gonna, initially, we're just gonna sell beer and wine. But we, obviously, with this license, have the ability to do private functions in these spaces, and maybe down the road, serve liquor as well. But also with this license, it's my understanding that we didn't want to serve 3-2 beer or a different version of wine. We wanted to be able to sell regular beer and wine, so that ends the application for the whole liquor license.
You'll have food, too, or?
Not in the beginning. What a lot of Americans do is they'll have their pizza oven, where we do pizza. It'll be a grab-and-go by the front desk as well.
Thank you.
Is there a pool?
Yes, pool, and then a spot, the workout center, all the bells and whistles.
Okay. Now?
What about meeting room space?
There's one meeting room. I couldn't tell you, and I'm going to be there tomorrow and see how they're coming along, but I want to see if we could do 25 people classroom-style, something typical.
More of a conference room, boardroom?
Yeah, conference. It's a little bit bigger than a boardroom, it's more of a conference room.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad to see it open. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3 is Basilica of St. Stan's sign request for their spring craft fair. Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.4 is Winona Area Chamber of Commerce sign request for their Main Street Open Streets. Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And item 3.5 is the East Recreation Center Community Garden, and Lydia Boyson is here to do a presentation.
Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Lydia Boyson. I work for the Park and Rec Department. I'm here to tell you about a project that we're working on at the East Rec Center that we are really, really excited about. It is a 50-plot raised bed community garden. This is an image of the 4.8 skate park. It's the southeast corner of the East Rec block. It's been vacant for about two years now. This fall, we recognized this potential as a community garden site, and it was like a light bulb, a light bulb. So really, we saw it not only as the perfect opportunity to meet some of the growing needs of gardeners in Winona, but also the perfect opportunity to be a really good steward of our space and to foster the positive effect that a garden can have on the neighborhood. So here it is. This is a garden design and practice that heavily follows NRPA gardening best practices as well as American Community Gardening Association. What you're looking at is a rough rendering of what the garden would look like. It would be comprised of 50 raised beds, approximately 32 inches deep, so allowing for adequate soil and root growth. We would be using cinder blocks to build the plots. We chose that material based on cost, durability, lifespan, and usability. If we need to ever relocate this garden, we would be able to use the materials again. We also plan on using some experimental materials, so things like hay bales and pallets, things like that. Our water is sourced from the East Rec Center, hose leading out to the space and using watering cans and things to lug the water around in the different raised beds. Compost area will be available for any plant waste that hasn't gone to seed to be recycled back into the garden. A shed is also already on-site, located on the property to house tools and other garden supplies, so that they're available for our gardeners. The usage model we've created looks like this. About two-thirds of the plots will be going to individuals. Those people register for a plot online or in person. They'll be responsible for planting, for tending, harvesting the things that they grow. The remaining third of the plots will go to different groups and organizations that we've reached out to in order to create a really diverse environment in the garden. So some of those interested groups include the Friendship Center, Restorative Justice, the Winona Manor, the volleyball crew at the East Rec, many of whom are Mung, and St. Stan's School. So the East Rec Center will also have plots for our patrons to be able to get out in the sunshine and get their hands in the dirt, learn how to grow things, and also supplement our summer lunch program. So we have, Chris Hood drew up a waiver for us, so people will sign that, just in case there's any crazy numbers out there. We have some workdays already lined up that will be inviting the community and people that are also participating in the garden to help and build this thing, and as well as some workdays at the end of the season to be able to winterize it and prep for the following season. Throughout the growing season, we'll also offer a variety of programming and events. Some of those might look like education, natural pest control, how to use that extra zucchini that you have, things like that. And other bits of it will be more celebratory, so things like tea parties and block parties and potlucks, things like that, just offering an opportunity for those people that work in the garden to connect with each other. in the garden to connect with each other. Ultimately, it's in this space that we hope to do the following three things. Number one, just provide a space for people to grow, eat, and share produce. So keep me close to home, keep me inaccessible. Number two, fostering wellness through gardening and programming. Gardening is super good for you. It's hard to argue that. People who grow vegetables are way more likely to eat them. People getting out in the sunshine and their hands in the dirt. It's really good for you mentally and yeah, it makes you less stressed and more present. There's a fun saying that goes, gardening is cheaper than therapy and you get tomatoes. Third is to celebrate diversity, creativity, and sustainability. We intentionally sought out people to be on our green team who are experts at these things. And so far, for diversity, we're reaching out to people and organizations that bring in diversity of age and ethnicity, economic status. For creativity, we're building programs and events that really tap into the creativity of our staff and community members, really trying to make this space beautiful. And then for sustainability, reaching out to people who know and practice sustainable living to help our garden along that same path. So a project of this scale obviously costs something. What you're looking at is a rough budget. And if you look at the expenditures, we would be spending approximately $10,200 on the raised bed costs. It includes programming. It includes some extra things in that space too, like shade and seeding, et cetera. We have received the ship grant for $1,500, applied for two other grants, waiting to hear back from them. Should we receive them, we would receive another $75,000. Plant or plot fees would bring in just over $1,000. And it gets us pretty close to our expenditures. So the city could end up paying $75 to get a community garden in our space. Looking at 2018, obviously, the big costs are gone. What remains is some programming costs and any additional supplies that, we don't know what they are yet, but we want to plan for. So my role in this project has been really to manage it, connecting people, running numbers, having meetings, and just setting up the systems of this program. But what I think has been most critical to the realization of this project are the people that fuel it with their enthusiasm. I'm talking about Bruno Borsari, and Jan Taylor, and Mark Camp, Ray Felton, Mr. Steve Sarvey, and my brilliant, hard-working staff, and many others. So just want to say thank you to those people for all of their help and support. Again, I thank you all for your listening here. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Well, I have to say, I think it's the most, the greatest new idea I've heard in a long time. I think it's really a great use of the East End Rec property over there. And it's just nothing but good things about the whole thing. So congratulations for coming up with it.
Other comments? Al?
I'm just curious about, I know you have a section in the material on water, and that would be supplied from the East Rec building?
Mm-hmm. We have an external source.
With a hose or a water card, I read?
It would be a hose from the building that goes into the fenced-in area. So it would be managed by the people within the space. That can be turned on and off.
Ever thought about doing some sort of rainwater collection system? Maybe you already have?
Yeah.
I mean, we talk about, you know, pervious and impervious surfaces, and that's a lot of impervious surface. So if you could collect that rainwater before it runs down to the stormwater system, that would be all the better for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. I met with John Howard earlier on in this project, went up on the East Rec roof. And it's a really great flat space, would have collected a lot of good water. It drains directly through an internal drain right into the storm system. So yeah, definitely open to ideas throughout this project if people bring them up. Try to do what we can to make it sustainable.
Good. George?
No, we had a chance, Councilman Scholmeyer and myself and the manager, we toured that with you. And it's very exciting. I believe Paul brought up an idea of collecting rainwater as well, too, to help spread around the site. You said you, some of the volunteers are here tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anyone else here?
And is that more of a?
Okay, okay. Good, good. Yeah, be a good project. Very good.
Hopefully, we involve also some students from Winona State, being funding the space on campus involved with the challenge. Very passionate about that. Maybe the example from the East End Rec may become impactful and persuade the students in the space that Winona State, you see this as a great learning opportunity for the student body if you have a chance.
Thank you all.
Maybe you want to put some beehives on the, on the roof of the East End Rec or something?
Yes.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I believe we have a motion, correct?
No motion, it's just a presentation.
Oh, just a presentation, okay.
We're just gonna do it.
Item 3.6 is a request by Winona Health to close Parks Avenue for Scrubs Camp on Thursday, June 29th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Again, motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 3.7 is a request for use of Lovey Park by Winona County Wellness Committee for their walk on April 26th. Move approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 3.8 is the Great River Shakespeare Festival Street Closure Request for their Will Run 28-Furlong Race on July 16th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, I think. Right. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 5.2 under New Business is the Complete Streets Policy and Pedestrian and Bicycle, Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. I'd make a motion to authorize the distribution of the attached RFP.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Yeah, what are we all doing here now?
Lucy, you want to tell us what we're doing?
Lot of pages in here. And a lot of maps.
Correct. This is a complete streets policy and a bicycle and pedestrian plan. And this was brought up during the comprehensive plan process, that this should be in place. Many communities around us, including Rochester and Red Wing, have a complete streets and pedestrian and bicycle plan. And basically, it sets up a process so that when you're redoing a street, that you can consider the pedestrian and bicycle modes of transportation and not just the motorized vehicles. So the idea would be asking for permission to go out for the RFPs. But Carlos would be back in April to have you review and award of that contract if we receive good quotes for the project. It's funded by $30,000 in ship money. I think Lydia just mentioned that source of funding. And then that's matched by budgeted funds the city approved in the budget for this year.
So this is for new streets or revamped streets?
So this would be a document that's prepared by a consultant to develop the policy for implementing pedestrian and bicycle improvements when we're planning a street. So what should be considered? Where should they be? Should it be a wider lane? Should it be a shero? So looking for that plan to be developed. And then engineers use that as a guide when they're planning a street project to incorporate the other modes of transportation other than vehicles.
Does this affect any current streets that are, that have been here for years?
No, not at this time. It would be going forward from the adoption of the policy.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lucy. We have a motion and ready to vote? I guess so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 5.3 is the Fee Ordinance for the Updated Prairie Island Campground Fees. I make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 5.4 is Prairie Island Campground and Canoe and Boat Rental Agreements. Make a motion to approve the attached agreements.
Again, second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 5.5, Councilman Craig regarding the Winona Area Public Schools' Study of Neighborhood Schools.
Uh, thank you, everybody, and thanks for allowing me to just bring this up. Don't want to spend much time on it. I simply want to clarify. There has, it seems as if there's been some confusion as to the city's role in what the school districts, discussions and potential plans are for potential school closures and also the potential new elementary school. I can make clear to everyone that the city has not taken any official action regarding this whatsoever. What the city's role has been to date is, community development is operating as they do with any business who is looking at a potential development and/or relocation. They've been asking specific questions on what about this parcel at this particular place, and the city will answer that. As a matter of fact, over the last three weeks, I think there has been, could be three weeks, but there's been two meetings for sure that the mayor, Councilman Borzakowski, and I, along with city staff and Mr. Sarvey, have attended. There were joint meetings with staff from 861 as well as some of their board members. And during those meetings, we again made it crystal clear that if they have specific questions, we're here to answer them. But the city is not taking any, we've not taken an official stand one way or the other. We all have our personal opinions. I represent Second Ward where Madison School is, and I personally want Madison School to remain open. But the difficult decisions and all the work is being done right now by 861. And again, as any entity who is looking to expand, move, develop, if they have specific questions about land use, community development is there to answer those questions. I just wanted to clarify that. Oh, and another thing that the city manager wanted to bring up, or he's mentioned at one of the meetings, oftentimes, there's discussions about, well, if we put it here, we may have to move this. Or if we put it here, it might affect some houses. It kind of scares people when they see something that'll be potentially affecting their business. Or more importantly, if there's a circle around somebody's house and you see that in the paper on somebody's plans. We asked them to be cautious about that, and they took that to heart. But again, the city's role is nothing more than we treat any business. And to date, we have made no official movement on anything. They have indicated they may come back with one or two or three pieces of property and then ask us, can we donate these? Can we sell these? Can we do what? And then we will take official action. But to date, nothing has been done. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, George?
Serving with Councilman Craig and the manager and the mayor on that group, yeah. Jerry said it all. He said it right. And as his concern is there for Second Ward School, my concern is there for the Fourth Ward School. So WK Building, so keep tuned. Thank you.
All right.
Item 5.6 is the City Manager Wage Increase. Make a motion to approve the wage increase?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Because this was added, I think it'd be appropriate to read it so that people know what, what we're voting on. According to the contract for city manager Stephen T. Sarvey, a wage increase may only be granted after a performance review. The mayor and city council held a closed session on February 27, 2017 to conduct a performance review of Mr. Sarvey and found his work to be at least satisfactory. As a result, the city council discussed increasing the city manager's annual wage to $117,450.97, which is equivalent to an increase from step two to step three in grade 25 of the city's base pay structure. The council concurs motion, which we've already had, and it would be effective February 28th, 2017. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry is.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Jerry, Craig. Never start with Jerry.
This is the first time in 37 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to say, but I'll try.
Speechless.
I didn't say anything about the community garden, but I agree with the mayor. This is one of the best ideas I've seen come along in a long time. A lot of great ideas, but you had it right down to where it's 75 bucks, the whole nine yards. Excellent job. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Al.
And I am happy to hear the mayor talk about the 1,000 West Fifth Building and its new owners and wish them success in their new endeavor as well. And I also noted the other day when I was online that the city has revamped our website and appreciate those that worked to get that up and running. And it's a great resource for information. You can stream these meetings online from the website, as well as look at the archives or at least access to them. And more importantly, it's a searchable database of all of the city's public ordinances and council agendas and minutes and city charters and all the important documents that form the bedrock of our community and how we govern ourselves here. So I'm very happy to see that happen. And I know it will be well-used. It's also a good way to get contact information if you're looking for a certain department or individual with their email or telephone. So appreciate the staff's work on that as we move forward. And just extending sympathy to the family of Berlto Schumpert. My understanding was he passed away over the weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Steve would like to make a comment.
Just two quick comments on the website. First is, it's still a work in progress. So some people may find that it's not working for them quite as well as we wanted to. So we're working those bugs out. But secondly, if you notice on the front page, there's certain flags. If you click on those flags, it automatically changes the language of the, of the page. So we've included Japanese and Polish for our two sister cities and Spanish.
Great, thank you.
Every place I've been on over the weekend has worked for me. So again, as you said...
We're finding people that are using some older operating systems are having trouble.
Okay.
So we'll do what we can.
Michelle?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Paul?
I want to thank Parks and Rec for opening up Mud King Ice Arena this week during spring break for the schools, so that kids have, have a place to go skating. Thanks for doing that.
George?
Hey, thank you. This morning, the mayor and city manager, myself, engineer Brian DeFrain, we were on a conference call with the railroad involving the Mankato Avenue switch plate down there. And I believe the conversation went okay. I believe this Friday, they should be getting back with a few more ideas on things maybe that we may be able to do. But we are working on it. I know we're getting a lot of calls. I know the manager is getting them directly now. And with something that we are, we are looking into. And it's going to take some time. But it's been years, but like I said, I think we may, may be able to come in close here to maybe get a breakthrough in that. And also, Brian DeFrain told us this morning that the railroad crossing at Louisa Street, Mankato Avenue, Franklin Street, Hamilton Street, West Fifth Street, and he mentioned another one or two, that the railroad contacted him this morning and said sometime in 2017, those railroad crossings will be upgraded. So that project should be taking off this year. So everything I see appeared to be pretty positive there. And also, I'd like to just pass out condolences to the family of John Burbach, John whose wife passed away, Julianne, last week. Wife, mother, grandmother, very, 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 very wonderful woman. And John is a retired Winona Street Department employee after many years. If you remember him, you would have seen him in the front-end loader. So condolences to his family as they begin their healing process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items. The approval of the minutes from February 21st and a claim against the city by Mr. Prodic.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by George, seconded by Michelle to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Al, we have it right on tonight? 7:24.
7:20.
No, 7:20 is very early.
7:00, Jerry Craig.
Right on.
Jerry?